We'll, we'll open the meeting. Welcome, everybody. We acknowledge the Bangla and Ghana people, the traditional owners of the land on which we met today, and pay our respects to the elders past and present, and extend that respect to other Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people that are present today. Today. All right. So, welcome, everybody. We have apologies from Peter Kalbukar. And in Peter's place, we have Peter Borda. So, welcome, Peter. Thumbs up. That's good. Okay, we'll move into item 1.2. Declaration of Members Conflict of Interest. Does anybody have any conflict of interest with any item being discussed today? Or any change in office that is relevant to the today's discussion? Pat?
No conflict of interest per se. Just to note that item 3.1, which is dealing with insurance and the local government insurance. The coverage, I am on the Audit Risk Committee of the Local Government Association, which covers the risk for local government mutual insurance. So it's only an item for noting, but I thought I should just reinforce that I have an interest in that.
Okay, thanks. I don't think that's going to preclude you from the discussion. Anything from you, Laurie?
No, nothing from me or good at my end.
Thank you. And Peter? Okay, all right. So we'll go into the minutes. We have the minutes of the meeting of the third, noting that we had the full minutes distributed to us on the 20th of April. Are there any discussions? Pat?
No.
Up on me. Peter, you were there, so I want to ask you. Okay, we're happy to accept those minutes, subject to inclusion of the confidential matters that were included in the 20th minutes. Pat?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yep.
And Peter? Okay, accepted. We'll move into agenda item 1.5. Cathy, can I hand over to you for this one?
Yes, thank you through the chair. Business arising from previous meetings, as you can see, we have updated the business arising whereby items two, three, and four are completed. The matter in relation to council's business continuity plan will be presented to the July council meeting, and that will also include an update in terms of council's risk management framework and risk profile. We have updated also Annex B in terms of external and internal reviews work plan with, as per the committee's requests, more defined dates for the provision of various items on that list. And then, thirdly, Annex D has been completely reframed in line with the committee's terms of reference. And so we present that work programme, noting that that work programme will evolve over time. And at each meeting, if there is a due date that is not going to be met, we'll bring that to the committee's agenda.
Okay, thanks for that, Cathy. Pat, I'll go to you first. Anything on the plan on the business arising?
No, nothing from me.
Laurie?
No, just a quick comment on the web programme. Thank you for putting it together. It's a pretty comprehensive plan, and we're trying to cover off a lot of things. You know, I would just keep in mind that with the resources we've got, it is a pretty ambitious set of activities, and I'd always just make sure we keep in mind that we get the quality of outputs rather than just churn through the quantity and just keep a close eye, I guess, going forward on whether we are trying to bite too much off or whether we're getting that right level of depth for each of those, because it is quite a big programme when you actually have a look at it.
Yeah, thanks, Laurie. That has been raised with Cathy. And what we will do is, at each meeting, we'll look for the forward work programme for the next meeting and see how we're going from the point of view of achieving that deadline. And we may be a little bit fluid in moving some of those items around, but that sentiment's been expressed back to executive management. So thanks for that, Laurie. Cathy, did you want to comment on that?
No, for the comments, we will certainly look at that forward programme and not try to progress things at the risk of either staff burnout or at the risk of not doing the items justice and report that to each audit committee meeting. Of course, I don't have that information at this meeting, but certainly we'll start doing that from the July meeting.
Okay, the only one for me on this was in relation to the annual business plan. So this is 23, 24. And Justin, if you are comfortable with this, can we capture that at agenda item 2.1? Just to get the feedback from council on our comments on the plan. Are you comfortable to do that at 2.1?
Yeah, I'm very happy to do that. Thanks.
All right. So we've got the resolution there. So that's up on the screen. Can I have a mover? Thanks, Pat. Can I have a second there? Thanks, Peter Borda. All those in favour? Okay, that's been accepted.
Yay.
All right, we'll move on to the budget. So, Justin, I'll go to you first just to give us feedback on our comments that we provided to council in relation to the first draft and where we're actually up to in finalising that draft, please.
Yes, thank you through the chair. So the feedback that came from the audit committee was discussed in detail with the council. We looked at each of the options that the audit committee put forward to look at ways of affecting budget repair or financially re-engineering our finances in terms of financial sustainability. Council considered each one in turn and has addressed each item. I don't say all sticks if I need to present, but I'll try to draw from memory. So the first one was about increasing rates above what was previously been considered. So the council's end profits and payment by the committee previously was 8.5. The council did have a look at the option of increasing rates higher than 8.5. And that's viewed was that 8.5 in the context of historic rate biases was probably going to be a pretty big number for the committee to accept. The second part of that first recommendation was to also try to remove the nexus between rate rises and CPI increases. And council has accepted that recommendation with the Budget Information Act. We're putting out to the community, we're leading with reference to the cost of rate biases increases on a per week basis. So all the average residential rate payout, for example, $2.30 and being the expected increase in the rate rise for next year. And through the budget documentation, we've also had a focus on why CPI is driving some of our input costs. In terms of deferring projects expenditure or making project expenditure conditional on the delivery of future rate rises, council has decided that at this point in time is not the time to make a reduction in some of the already planned projects that we have on our books. Two years ago, the council made the decision to increase resources at that time to both attend to some of the legacy issues and also to set up all the transformation that's in front of us. But there was an old reverse, also it was a modest increase in resourcing. The council is of the view that we want to retain that resourcing in place at this point in time so that some of those projects actually ought to deliver those projects that will see a step change in our revenue going forward. However, has acknowledged that if that revenue doesn't come online within the next couple of years, that it will reduce those management positions by three years and will reduce its planned capital expenditure by 25%. So at this point in time, in paraprasing, we're sort of holding the line in terms of the current plan by acknowledging and factoring into our long-term financial plan that if that revenue doesn't come online, that it will be a measure of reduction in staffing numbers and capital expenditure in a couple of years' time. The council also did look at the notion of reducing some of the services or service levels and concur that we would like to do the service reviews, as discussed at the last audit committee and also on today's agenda, to make informed decisions about any changes to service levels. So maintaining current service levels is the current prevailing view. Increasing income from other sources, we have looked at that, primarily main other sources. Other than rates would be through fees and charges associated with the airport or childcare. Both airport costs and airport fees and childcare fees will go up. That it will be a nominal impact in terms of the overall finances of council. And we are also actively working with the Spencer Gulf Region and state government, preparing submissions to go to the federal government in the not-too-distant future in line with the federal government's regional growth and partnerships programme, which we hope to be able to secure submission funding through that process. And in terms of rationalising disposing underperforming assets, that is an area that the council agrees that we do need to do some more work. We have workshops scheduled with the, or an electorative agreement scheduled with the electorative group on the 27th of May to look at particularly our building stock and how we can look to address some of the legacy issues associated with some of our aging buildings. And then lastly, I'm not sure what that helps with, including amounts for non-infrastructure strategic projects. Not sure what that means. I think that's been sort of lost in translation. So, so in short, the council paid due consideration to those recommendations, has amended the long-term financial payments and the budget assumptions in relation to future years. At this point in time, the council has agreed to commence a committee consultation on the premise of a $2.30 per week increase in rates, which is measured with a 8.5% increase. But has indicated to the community that we are very keen to hear from the committee about services and service levels and the budget assumptions. And council will consider all of the feedback we'll receive with that process on the 29th of May and will give final, sort of writing instructions to the administration as to what to bring back in the final iteration of the annual business plan for adoption at the end of October. Happy to respond to any particular questions, Chair. You're on mute if you are the speaking chair. Sorry.
I'll turn my, I'll mute myself now. Can you just give us an update in relation to where the council landed on the childcare centre? Because I see there's been some additional capital expenditure included.
Yeah, so the council has agreed to a small increase in the budget. I want to say small, it's all relative, it's $250,000, increase in the allocated budget. Whilst that's an increase in the budget, it's a significant reduction from what we're receiving in terms of tender responses in relation to the scope of works for planned upgrades to the childcare. So we worked very closely with the third contractor and looked at how we can change the scope of works to actually bring the cost of works back down closer to our budget allocations. The main area where we were able to identify some significant reductions is being able to use some of the infrastructure that is located at the record and leisure centre immediately behind the childcare centre. So we're able to reuse some of that infrastructure as opposed to having to open infrastructure specifically for the childcare service. Council in acknowledging or approving that increase in terms of budget has also increased or will be increasing the cost of the fees and charges for the people using the childcare service in order to recover the cost of that investment over a reasonable timeframe. I think it was over 33 years. The increase in childcare fees will cover the costs associated with the upgrade.
So that childcare centre is not subject to the service review then? That's off the table?
No, the childcare centre is very, very clearly on the table as one of the identified areas for the service reviews. The discussion with the council was that the potential to, in confidence, to potentially look to dispose of or move away from direct service delivery for childcare services. It would be easier to do that if the facility is upgraded. So we believe that the investment that is being made is what you might call a modest investment. It addresses some of the areas where we're not meeting contemporary standards. So in terms of the childcare service being potentially a service that could be privatised, we think that's still an appropriate investment at this point in time. We are also looking to reach out to one or two childcare service providers, particularly ones that have shown some interest in setting up childcare service environment in the past, with a view to starting to look at what the market appetite may be in terms of alternative service providers coming into the city. But the service review will proceed and will look at whether we have come to delivering cost-effective and efficient childcare service with the facilities and the resources that we've got. However, the council has acknowledged that that particular service may not be best delivered by a party other than council. So the service review will look at the commercial opportunities associated with divesting council's role in direct service provision as part of that service review.
Thanks for that update, Justin. What I will do is I'll go to each of the committee members to see if they have any comment based on that update, and then we'll go into the Q3 review. So Laurie, I'll go to you first, please.
Yeah, my only comments, and thanks, Justin, for the update and overview, is really that, I guess, at the last meeting, we as a committee spoke about the fact that we're we are operating outside of those parameters, and we put it to council, and council is continuing to do what they choose to do, and that's well within their right to do so. I'd be keen on any recommendations that we have. It's just something at the bottom, noting that we recommend whatever we've got, but we also actually just note the fact that it is operating outside of our standard parameters and that we should be seeking to endeavour to either monitor or address that, you know, going forward or just have some sort of mention to it so that we don't just, you know, completely ignore that fact.
Thanks, Laurie. Pat?
Sorry. Yes, I had a similar view. I wasn't necessarily keen on recommending the budget review or noting that, I mean, I'm happy to note that, I'm happy to note that council have decided that that's the way they want to go. But given it's outside the parameters, I wasn't sure I wanted to be recommending anything without.
Thanks, Pat. Peter, I know you're conflicted in this since you said on council as well, but did you have any comments you wanted to make?
Pat's not there of any tangible value. I'd have a question regarding the infrastructure that's been reused. The program's not asked that question.
In relation to the update that Justin's just given?
Yeah, in regards to the childcare centre infrastructure that was being reused from the RAC Centre.
Sure, if you've got a question, raise it.
Just to know what that infrastructure was that's been reused.
Thank you through the chair. It was, it was firefighting water that's being provided. So there's some, it's part of the upgrade to the childcare centre. We should have upgraded the firefighting equipment. But because it's a mistake, obviously our RAC Centre would be able to plug into the RAC Centre's water and firefight hydrant. So in that way, we have a need to spend additional money at the childcare centre.
Okay, thank you. From my perspective, I'm probably similar to Laurie and to Pat from the point of view is, I'm pleased that the council considered each of our points that we raised. I suppose I'm disappointed on where they've landed because my gut feel is that it does feel a bit like kicking the can down the road, and I am concerned with intergenerational inequity that happens when you take on debt and particularly when you take on debt in a rising interest rate environment as well. Your normal protocol is you reduce debt when rates are rising, and we're seeing that continue with the RBA moving this week. And those rates, although there's talk that they will fall at some stage, they are very high. So why would you borrow in a high environment? And why would you fix in a high environment? But I do note council have considered and noted that position. I think what we'll look at is actual performance to budget as well for next year, if that plan is approved with a deficit. Because if we look at this year, this year was some 40% unfavorable to budget on our projection. So we're materially off where we expected to be. So if we're still looking at being in deficit and we're saying that deteriorate further, interventions need to occur. And to me, it's always better to put those interventions in when you have a clear head rather than having to do it when the situation becomes worse for you. So I think we note the sentiment of the committee, but this number to me is very much on watch. And when we come to the exposure advice as well, we can talk a little bit more about what they're going to come back and tell us there. Grant, can I go to you? Sorry.
Sorry, if I may change?
Yeah, sure. I can't see everybody, so please speak up if I'm.
Yeah.
Just someone's got something else turned on.
My, thank you.
Wait, where are you going, Justin?
Yeah, so.
We're just getting some feedback.
Sorry. All right, I didn't do that. Actually, thanks. I need to get my apologies. Sorry, Chair, I just wanted to make two extra comments of fact of the audit committee's feedback. One is that we have been very, very explicit with the community regarding the feedback that we received from the audit committee. So as part of the budget consultation process, we've actually provided to the community the list of recommendations that the audit committee has asked council to consider. So that is actually front and centre of part of that consultation with the community. The second thing is, whilst council has, at this point in time, indicated that it would look to reduce its capital expenditure in a couple of years' time by 25% in line with all the recommendations, we are finding more and more that a lot of our capital projects are coming in excessively over budget. So to your points, Chair, which is a correct point, we have had some budget variations going the wrong way. We've had some of our capital providers coming at three to four times the price of budget estimates, even though those estimates have been produced by local experts. And in some instances, also been subject to quantity survey reviews as well. So I'm just foreshadowing that, that one of the matters that in council will need to consider is its capital works programme and how realistic it is to be able to deliver that capital work programme given the prevailing economic conditions where prices are coming in well above budget estimates. And it may well still be, Chair, that the council often does look at change or factoring in some sort of change towards capital works programme in light of the prevailing economic conditions that are causing us some relief at present. Can't preen what council do, but I'm just don't want the audit committee to think that the council has not had serious regards to the feedback. I'm finding it really frustrating to pull up recommendations to a decision-making body and the decision-making body critically not accepting those recommendations. I just want to assure the audit committee that's not the case in these instances. And we still have a bit of time, 20 now and the end of June, for council to make final determinations.
Thanks, Justin, for that update. What we might do now is move into the Q3 update. So, Grant, over to you, please.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so with the budget review that we've presented, I guess the key items, I mean, there's obviously always a lot of things that are happening within our budget, ups and downs and management of council's quite large and extensive service delivery budgets. I guess the key areas that have hit in this review, we've got our, come up with our final estimates of our interest costs for the year. Obviously, as mentioned in the previous item, you know, this year, the interest rates have moved quite quickly. And so those estimates have had to be updated as we move, noting that in our future years, we have built-in, we had built-in interest rate increases. So it's not impacting future year budgets with the, with the upped rates. It was just the current year budget. We hadn't quite expected the increase during the year quite so quickly. So we've done our second review of those interest rate projections, and this time it's really hit the airport. So last time we'd upped our projections, but this time we've taken into account the portion of rates that sit across the airport. So that's hit there. The airport has also had, is still having some challenges with income coming back to pre-COVID levels in a few areas, such as car parking and our leases for our car hire, which should start to pick up soon. Some of the lease amounts have a base amount, but also can be based on total turnover. So with their turnover down, they've sat back down at their base rates for a little while. And in the main, I guess, service delivery area where we're struggling a little bit with cost is in our legal littering. So that's something in a council I've been discussing. I've put some money in next year's budget to dealing with education and some other programmes around waste. But yeah, that's probably the key other budget pressure that's come through in this budget review. So yes, while we've tried very hard to manage it within offsetting all the amounts, I guess they're the three areas that we haven't been able to offset in other areas of the business.
Thanks, Grant, for that update. I'll go to committee members. Laurie, to you first place.
No, I think it's, I think the comments are all pretty clear and understandable. You know, and really my theme is along with the previous points, just being aware of the fact that we're, we are tracking in the wrong direction, so to speak. And it's, it's the time now to be as prudent as we can with what we're spending and where we're spending. But once all noted, just one question. Operating income, sorry, I had a question there. Look, I'll come back. It was a question in relation to selling labour costs for decreasing, but then when I was looking at it, they're actually going up. If I've got to find the point again, I'll come back to it.
Thanks, Laurie. I'll come back to you after I loop back with the other committee members. Peter, did you have a question or a comment?
I think I might answer it, but the increase in luring the further work that's to be done there, you mentioned education around waste. That's the focus, is to let people know that if they're going to turn a blind eye or if they're to cop themselves, that they're actually going to pay for it in their rates anyway. Is that sort of the education around waste disposal and illegal, illegal littering?
Well, I think there's two parts to it. So yes, I know we're going in with the waste education programme next year. So part of it will focus on what rubbish goes in what bins. That's a part. That's a part, a key part of our overall waste costs that we're, you know, dealing with, with, you know, green waste, you know, ending up in the red bins, that sort of thing. But I, I agree. I think it was a second part in terms of understanding overall the, the waste. And I've seen a couple of councils have done some quite good stuff recently in that space. So I think working together and having that be, you know, hitting a few spaces at the same time. And some of the stuff we've discussed with elected members about showing what the true costs of these things are for the city and, and ratepayers. Yeah, I think we want to sort of hit a few places at the same, at the same time.
Thanks, Peter. Pat, over to you.
No, nothing additional from me.
Okay, I'm just going to have to bring my notes up now. Grant, I was interested when you look at the years, I suppose, two and three, where they've materially changed, particularly the twenty five, twenty six, down by a million, million dollars. And I think that is what you outlined, Justin, before about the resourcing side that sits there. I suppose my general concern is when I looked through the variances, the variants are very much operational based variances, not the capital work side. So that, the bits that worries me that when we look at what's being embedded as actual this year. And then we look at where your starting position from your budget is next year, they're almost equal. So it, it says, well, were they one off this year? Or are they going to have a permanent flaw in into future years and there is a bigger problem going to come through? So I'll, I'll leave that comment with you just to, you know, convince yourselves that you are comfortable that they are one off or they can be dealt with in the twenty three, twenty four plan that are more operational in nature. You know, you look at some things like power costs and so forth, which have materially gone up. But just be aware of that transition from one year to the other. And if they're not going to be permanently uplifted or inflated, and can you deal with them? So Grant, that's more just a comment than looking for a response from you on that.
Yep, noted and definitely something that's in my mind, so.
Okay, thank you. Now, there's two recommendations there. We could do this two ways. We could just note that report with our comments or actually recommend to the, the council. Probably given where we're at at the moment, I'd probably take the, the recommendation side. So do I have a mover for the recommendation? Just, Justin?
All right, I'll add to it. The audit committee discussion and the feedback from the audit committee is very clear to the council regarding the concern about the underlying budget position. In that context, I think it would be appropriate to front end this recommendation with some words to effect that the audit committee, noting the, or the the underlying structural repair with vital budget or some words to that effect, recommend the budget review so that it is continually reinforced to both the council and the community that our current financial position is, is unsustainable. So I wouldn't suggest that you actually do put a couple of extra words into the proposed recommendation. And I'm not sure if you can see that on the screen, Chair, some words that they've just been putting in. But happy for the committee to determine which words they would like to use.
Yeah, what, what, given that the council see our four minutes, we might capture that as before we come to the recommendations. So we can build that sentiment around the discomfort that the committee continues to have with the unsustainable position the council currently sits and is projected to sit in. So we'll capture that upfront. And then we can leave the recommendations pure as they stand. So are committee members comfortable to include some words in the minutes and then go straight to the resolutions? Laurie?
Yeah, I, I think the, what's been written up on the screen makes sense to me. It captures what, what we're actually talking about and going from there. So I'd be happy with that as well.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll run with that then. Pat, you okay with that?
Yeah, I like, I like the idea of the few words that is part of the recommendation.
And Peter?
Yes, I can, okay.
Okay, all right, I'll have a mover. Thanks, Peter. And a seconder, thanks, Laurie. I'll put it to the vote. Passed, okay. Those two resolutions have been accepted. We now have the request for tender two point two. Can I go to you, Cathy, please?
Yes, thank you through the chair. Further to the comments from the last audit committee meeting and also picking up the committee's comments and also the chief executive officer's comment this morning. Part of the budget repair programme is to introduce that programme of service reviews. And this request for proposals out to the market is to send proposals for the delivery of the programme of service reviews and internal audit. As the report states, the City of Wayala has or does not have a current internal audit or service review programme. And the introduction of such a programme will actually bring into the organisation a review that, a review programme that will assist us in looking for efficiency and effectiveness, determining whether or not service levels at their current standards or at their current rate are the right service levels. And if they're not the right service levels, then what changes actually need to be made? So this programme is a very key structure in the overall approach of the organisation to start to look for the efficiencies and effectiveness that can be achieved. The report at the last audit and risk committee meeting suggested that we would look to go out to and submit a request for proposal process. In pulling together the draft scope of service and, and the review, we felt that to go out to the open market for this so that we don't actually limit ourselves with the people who or the prospective proponents to come into this would be the better approach. I'll pause there and open for questions.
Thanks, Cathy. Pat, I might go to you first.
Yeah, I mean, I support the proposed draft. I was a bit concerned initially that it was really quite broad and I couldn't see how it was actually then in terms of the service review focusing in on the areas that have been particularly identified previously. But then when, by the time you get to page forty nine, you see that there is a draft outline for five service reviews, which does focus on those. So I think we get there. But I just found it a bit difficult in the initial phases to look out whether that's where we were wanting. I, I know we want to give maximum flexibility for people to respond in whatever way they seek. But we do want to end up with service reviews of those particular areas as well as other things. You know, that might come up. So I was a bit confused, but it may be just the way I read it in the papers. And that, that's actually okay.
Yeah, Pat, we'll hold, we'll, we'll come back to your comment there and we'll get the feel from all of the committee and loop back. Because I have a general concern where you're sitting as well. So over to you, Peter, if I could.
I don't have a huge amount of experience in this area at all, and I'm just really in your hands to offer anything you see.
Okay, Laurie?
I get where you're trying to go with these service review things. And I've sort of seen, seen them in the past with some of the providers that come in. And I'm happy to go with council's approach to market to find the best provider to give those reviews, knowing what you're trying to do. Just be aware that if we don't get what we, what we're looking for, that we act accordingly. But otherwise, I'm supportive of council's approach on that.
Thanks, Laurie. Again, I have to go to my notes. From my, my perspective, I found the first bit very wordy like Pat until I actually got to what they wanted from the proposal. And that's where I got comfort is around your proposal should address. Just on that, I think if we can outline that, we want them to also look at where focus and priority should sit from a service review as, as well as an internal audit. I don't see the need to put the selection criteria in there. That's our internal document. But if that is something council normally does, I'll, I'll go with that. And in relation to sorry, and in relation to the in relation to the, the period, I think they're just three year periods, right of renewal of two years and so forth. Well, we can do that based on the relationship. So to me, focus very much on this is a three year engagement, particularly around the internal audit side. And the key there is getting the right people in the room to provide what is their methodology, approach and priority in providing those services to us. So I would strip out some of the information at the front because I think it potentially confuses and limit down what you're actually focused on. So Cathy, I might go back to you, just your, your impressions in relation to that feedback.
Yes, thank you through the chair. Very happy to take out some of the information at the front end of that request for tender. The last thing that we want to do is, is confuse it. So, so yes, I'll trim that, we will trim that back. In response to Pat's comments, the five service reviews that we have identified are certainly the ones that we intend to kick off the programme with. The intent of this body of work, though, is to develop then a full programme of service reviews based on priority and focus over the term of the council. So we'll make sure that that's clear.
Okay, so I think the recommendation is that the audit and risk committee endorses the issuing of the request for proposal as attached through an open tender process. Is that basically what you're asking for?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
So before you put that motion through the audit committee, I just did have a question.
Sure.
Just in relation to the timeframe, so on page thirty eight, have you done that? My eyes are terrible. Thirty six, my apologies, thirty six, we write an outline of the potential timeframes for the process. Pardon, sorry, in retrospect that we didn't have this discussion outlined. But we effectively lose a month in terms of the timeframes by having, as it's currently drafted, where the audit committee essentially considers the proposals in the middle of July. But the council itself doesn't then make a decision until twenty first of August. I'm just wondering if there's a way that we could look to enable council making a decision sooner. And whether it's either a recommendation coming straight from the audit committee on the seventh of July, that goes straight into the council.
Yeah, that, to me, we can do, we can do a circular resolution on this one. And if maybe if there's anything that people are just uncomfortable with, we'd call a special meeting of the audit and risk committee. So we'll, we'll meet that timeframe.
I'll certainly look to bring the timeframe earlier so that we can get the recommendation to the July council meeting as opposed to the August council meeting. One of the proposals is that we do involve you, Grant, and also Justin in the, the presentations from prospective proponents. And, and we can do a circular resolution.
Yeah, I got the, you wrote this into that, but that's more than appropriate. Thanks, Cathy. All right, so we'll go to the recommendation. The recommendation is that the audit committee supports, endorse, sorry, the audit committee endorses the issuing of the request for proposal through an open tender process. Is that it, Cathy?
Yes, it is. So the XXX can come out.
Yep. Yeah, let's just have, supports the issue of the request for a proposal as attached.
The audit, the audit and risk committee to take out subject to the inclusion of the following feedback.
Well, I, I put, I put subject to the inclusion because we've given that. So you said you can do that. So subject to the inclusion of the above feedback?
Just take out the word following?
Yep.
Feedback provided, supports.
Endorses, yep, provided, supports the issuing issuing of the request for proposal as attached? Full stop? Because it's got there the process you're going to go through to take out the scope and everything else? Yep. Okay, do I have a mover? Thanks, Laurie. Seconder, thanks.
Thank you.
All those in favour? Yep. Okay, that one's passed. So thank you guys for that. Thank you, Cathy. Grant, can I go to the procurement, procurement policy, please?
Yes, thank you through the chair. So yes, over the last twelve months. So we've just been working through a bit of a change to our overall procurement frameworks. We're working with the South Australian State Government Department for some assistance in that. As I've undertaken a bit of a review of their overall framework over the last couple of years. So it was a good chance to sort of partner with them. It's been taking a little bit longer than we'd expected just with on both sides to some delays from other priorities going on. But we're getting towards the end now. And the key document obviously that comes out of it and that is sort of reviewed by audit committee and council is the policy position itself. And then a lot of the other documents are really, you know, just the, the templates and the way that we implement that, that change throughout the organisation and those undertaking procurement. So yeah, so resenting here an updated, what's procurement and contract management policy. And yeah, I guess the key changes, I guess, from what we've had before. So a lot of it is just some similar structure and information in there. Some of the key changes being a, a bit of an increase in some of our thresholds to where each procurement process is used. So they haven't changed for quite a long time and it was felt appropriate to update those. Slight change to how exemptions to the policy are approved. So currently they all go to the CEO. There was a proposal in there that. Oh, try, is that all right? Yep, that, that's right. Yeah, and so, yeah, change to just how exemptions are approved. They'll still be all reported, so they're quite a transparent process. They'll still all come through the audit committee and council. But just, you know, looking at that risk and, and sign off. So directors had the approval to sign off exemptions up to a certain, up to a hundred thousand, which wasn't there before. We've kept in the, the, the local purchasing, you know, taking that into account. And when we're doing procurement, that's always been a thing that's important to council. So we didn't want to remove that from the process. So yeah, there's not. Oh, and the, and the other thing, obviously, sorry, was the acquisition plan. So one of the key areas, as we've looked through our processes and looked at our framework, you know, it was probably that upfront process that was lacking a little bit, the planning for procurement. So bringing in an acquisition plan for all procurements over forty thousand was probably the, is a big change to the process for us. So that's outlined in the policy that that will happen. And that just helps with some of the other issues that have been identified in terms of upfront identifying how you're going to evaluate the procurement process and making sure that's well documented, who's going to be involved in the evaluation process, that sort of thing. So that I, that fixed with some of the other small improvements that we've identified needed to happen with that process. So yeah, and as I said, because we have started from scratch, I haven't got a track changes version of the policy. Rather, we've presented the new one and the old one for information.
Thanks for that update. Yeah, thanks for that update, Grant. I'll go to committee members. So if I can. Yeah, thanks for that update, Grant. I'll go to committee members. So if I can go to Peter first.
Thanks, Grant. The social consideration regarding the, and on page one hundred and twenty-one. Has the answer to this, but just how, how much this is told to the contractors when they're not provided, sorry, when they're not selected. So local providers that aren't selected. Are they sort of given any encouragement to re-tender or submit the next lot of work that might come out to them? Are they told why they weren't selected or where they might be off? And the reason I ask that, I guess, is because just some rumblings that may gather momentum. As works are done is that all the local providers aren't used. I have to feel that it's probably out of their expertise. There are a number of things in this, page one hundred and twenty-one. Just my question is in regards to the communication of those things to the contractor so that they can either upskill. Or if they are really keen for them, they can make some changes. So how is that communicated to the local contractors?
Yep. So through the chair, we're happy to provide feedback to the normal procurement process. And this is basically how most people do it. You'll normally do a. A notification of to the unsuccessful parties. And then within that, they'll be given the opportunity to. Ask for feedback if they want it. So don't provide blanket feedback to everyone. We'll provide feedback on requests. Where, what I would say, I guess, is we're already giving local suppliers a head start almost with our policy. In terms of giving them, you know, taking into account the fact that their local supplier actually gives them. A higher starting score almost. Doesn't mean that outside providers can't get some. Score in that area if they're using local subcontractors, materials, those sorts of things. But really, so where locals aren't getting the work compared from, compared to someone outside the organ thing, that they're probably way out on price would be my. Guess to start with. Or like you say, there are times when they just don't have the expertise to necessarily. Provide. But I think it's often cost is actually one of the main ones. And we will provide that feedback if they are, they've lost. Purely on cost, we will tell them that they, that they'll need to tighten their, you know, tighten it up for next time if they, if they want to get the work.
Yes, Justin.
Thank you, Chair. Again, I have some reservations about asking this question, but it is important. The definition of local. And the weighting that's provided to local suppliers versus non-local suppliers. My question is, should we have a sliding scale so that certainly any wild based companies. Gets the most weight in. But companies that may be based in Port Augusta, for example, or within region. Get some sort of weighting as opposed to companies that are based in Adelaide. Whether we should have some sort of sliding scale, given that one of the things that we're doing, looking at. Compared to the air peninsula, LGA, through the Spencer Gold, LGA is heavily increased regional capacity and regional service delivery. And wondering whether our procurement policy should play one step towards providing support to. Regional based companies as opposed to metropolitan based companies.
It's probably a question back to yourselves. Because, because I, I, I agree with what you just said. And you could expand or have two definitions. One is within the wild or region, and the other. To any participant or any company in that group that you just talked about. So if you're in that catchment area, they get a benefit, but we. We'd probably be looking at you as the executives, say what that would be. So I'm looking at probably you, Justin, or Grant on that one of, do you want to include it and what, how would it be framed? Yes, Laurie, I'll go to you.
My only question was just trying to understand if you go to Port Augusta or Port Perry. Does it make any difference to the Wayala residents and community over going to Adelaide or somewhere else? And so I, how much is being kept in the region versus, versus just the right thing to do in the area? And that's how I would think about the different ratings. But. Yeah, that's real, I'd guess.
For the sake of moving, can, can we not include that at this stage, but leave that with management? If they want to make that amendment, we'd be very open to looking at. We do have associations and you are looking at aggregation within region to provide a benefit. So. Are you comfortable with that, Justin? If we leave it in your hands, if you want to come back with this?
Yeah, happy. The audit committee recommends the council the policy as adopted and mentioned. Wish to discuss that further with council. We can do that at the time the council considers the policy.
Okay, thank you. Laurie, did you have anything else on the policy?
Yeah, really for me, it was just trying to understand what practically the threshold changes mean. So if you're going a hundred, a hundred K, for example, that. Had to go to CEO before, what does it actually mean in terms of the type of transactions that would, would be changing from, from the amendments?
Okay, I'm good. Yeah, Grant, you go.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. Yeah, look, we do get a few, I mean, as I say, you'll see later in this agenda, we've got our quarterly, two quarterly procurement reports from last quarter. And part of our policy has always been that if we do exempt something from our policy, it will be reported. To openly to audit committee and to council. So that, you know, it's that we can see why we're signing off on those. And, and often. The reason for not undertaking the normal procurement process. Might be expediency in, you know. Cases where expediency is absolutely required and will outline those reasons in, in there. It might be where we've. Used a supplier for quite a while to do, to get to a certain point and their existing knowledge is, is, you know. Wanted into the next stage. So part of that reporting back to the audit committee as well is showing why. You know, why we've done it, but also how. How council believes that they're still getting value for money from that procurement without going to the open market or to going to get free quotes and that sort of thing. So. The reports in this agenda probably give a bit of an idea of where we've tended to do those. And yeah, I mean, I'm open to suggestions if we think that threshold of a hundred thousand is too high. I guess. Really, you only need to sign off normally from forty thousand upwards because under forty thousand, you only really need two quotes and they're normally pretty easy to get. It's just that from forty thousand onwards, we normally have to do a formal request for quote process. And sometimes if we don't go through that, we'll. We'll get an exemption off for, for the outlined reasons.
Laurie? Still on mute, Laurie?
I was just saying thank you for the answer. I'm good with that.
Pat?
Yeah, I had a similar question. So that covered, there was just a couple of other minor things at page sixty-three, when you're talking about other legislation. We've got independent commissioner against corruption, that got amended in the recent amendment. So that's actually commissioned, not commissioned. At page sixty-five, item five, point nine. And I think there's just a grammar issue, providing with fair and reasonable access to opportunities. I think there's an extrude in there that shouldn't be this. And in page sixty-six, you talk about. Page, at the second line of stop point, you talk about supporting procurement. Council is committing to supporting Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander disenclism promoting the employment. Of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people by supporting procurement. I'm not quite sure what that means. You've already got all your considerations for. For when, for, for the percentage of, you know. Assessment. So I'm just, I'm not quite sure.
That first stop.
Actually added or what it meant.
I think that first stop point can come out totally because you've covered, covered above.
Yeah.
Grant, you're okay with that? Yep, keep going, Pat.
And then just page seventy-three, you've got your exemption. There's a lot of exemptions that, and you know, there might be good reasons for that. But it includes things like employee assistance programme costs. Now, I wasn't sure whether that was the actual programme. In which case I wasn't sure why that would be exempt or if it was just costs under the programme, in which case there might be some logic to that being exempt. And also things like legal services and psychometric testing. I would have thought that was a lot of things that normally wouldn't necessarily. Be exempted. But again, I'm open to being convinced that that's appropriate.
Grant, I'll go to you or Justin. Tell us from that one, please.
Yep, I'll have the first. I got that. I say, yes, the first one was employee assistance programme. So they're actually. That's something that's contained within our E B. And we have specific suppliers that are listed and people start and go straight to them on a, on a confidential basis. So that's one of the reasons they're in there. Legal, yeah, we've always had legal, like most councils have that exempt from their policy because of the fact that you can't normally go and. It's very hard to go and get a quote for legal services in terms of, you know, often one lawyer will have a background on this specific topic. You've dealt with them before. It's often very hard to meet your procurement requirements if you don't exempt them for legal services. And. Yeah, good one on psychometric testing. It's probably one that could come out, to be fair. It's been on there for a while. I'm not. That one's actually been there for a while and I'm not sure of the reason for that one specifically.
Did you want it taken out, Pat?
Well, I mean, I can. I understand now about your employee business costs, that would legal services, like the standard justification circumstances. So. Deal with that. I don't think like metrics, this is really against it.
Let's check it out.
Standard common provision.
Yep.
That was probably all I had on the policy.
Okay, thanks for that. Peter had asked you?
Yeah, yeah, all good.
All good, okay. The, the only one for me relates to contract management. The policy is silent on when you need a formal contract. What would be in that contract and who signs off on that contract that the contract's appropriate? So you've got the own risk provisions, risk and obligations. And those standard things you have in a contract and then a sign off of the group in the organisation that says, yes, your contract is good. Or no, you need to get it signed off by a third party solicitor. So how are you dealing with the, the contracts itself from a policy point of view?
Yep, I'm happy to answer that. So we have got, we've updated our standard contracts. So that was part of our review. Was that our contracts were probably a little bit, it wasn't consistent formatting and wording. So we've worked quite closely with. Some, some legal assistants to get updated contract templates for, a main one for goods and services and then one for, for works. In terms of delegations, so. The, I guess, working through how things work in like government, we have never had those in a policy, as a policy position before. That is instead done as part of council's overall delegations. And so we're going to be updating the delegations. But the way that works is basically, council have delegated to the CEO financial delegation and for signing off of contracts. And then the CEO signs off on how that will be subdelegated throughout the organisation. So. We have some thresholds that we have for when we need the CEOs. Sign off on a contract where they need to set the CEO and one or two directors signing off, obviously going down through values where it's only. You know, one director or even a manager who can sign the contract off for those lower value ones. So that's.
Where's that captured, Grant?
That's captured within the delegations themselves.
I, I think there needs to be a section in here around that the contracts have to be put in place, or contracts have to be formalised. As per the delegations policy. There needs to be some lick around when a contract is required. When you've got your procurement policy, either pointing to another policy or words to itself of how, when and why.
Yeah, we can put some quiet, we can put some quiet, because basically our words are, is that. Fifty, the forty thousand is the delegate, is the threshold when a contract is required. That's our, so I'm happy to, I can add that into the policy quite easily. And then the delegations handle how the sign off of those work.
Yep, okay. Because what you find in larger corporates, they're quite specific on what is the sign off process. And when you get risk and obligation reports for contracts. And then the hierarchy of who needs to be reviewer and be involved, particularly risk, legal and normally finance on those. But. If we can have some words in that. So I'll put the resolution that we recommend. The procurement and contract policy for adoption to council, subject to. The inclusion. Of amendments. Discussed above. And Pat, we capture your changes as well as that general requirement for management to put in a section around that contract management in the policy. So are we comfortable with that? Can I have a proposal? Thanks, Laurie, seconder. Thanks, Peter. All those in favour? Passed. Thank you, guys. Okay, we'll move on to the privacy policy. How are we going for time? When do you want to have a break? Kathy or Justin, if at all?
I'm just thinking perhaps if we do the privacy policy now, and then that's all of the items for decision and we can. Have a break after the privacy policy and then move into the items for noting.
Okay, thank you. Kathy, privacy policy.
Yes, thank you. We have Andrea Malone here in attendance at this meeting and Andrea was previously our manager of legislation. I asked, Andrea is continuing to do work for us, particularly around governance and mandatory training for council members. And I had asked Andrea to bring together a privacy policy for the organisation. Following the matter around information that we had last month. Andrea has pulled this draft together, so I might hand over to Andrea to make any comments.
In your hands, Andrea.
Thank you, Kathy, and through the chair. So the, the policy that I put together is based very heavily on the. Privacy principles put out by the state government. Which are mandatory to state government agencies, but which don't apply to councils. For reasons that have been always inexplicable to me, South Australia doesn't have a privacy act. And so these principles are priority to government of the state. So I thought it'd be best if council did work with what has already been provided by the state so that we're. We're synchronized with them. And I've changed the elements of it that don't actually apply to councils. And just before I finish this introductory element to the policy, I would just draw to your attention that. In the last few days, the state records about for consultation, a privacy strategy. I've had a quick look at that to see whether it was going to have any impact on this policy. And. Sure answer is it won't have any impact at all. It's not proposing to change anything in the privacy principles themselves. But it is looking at things like a private, building a privacy culture, building privacy considerations into risk decisions. And that kind of thing. And so there will be obviously some more movement on privacy in general. Coming out of state records and they have asked for feedback from councils. So there'd be likely to be more things coming down the line from. From that perspective, but not maybe changes to the actual principles.
Okay, thanks, Andrea. I'll open up for discussion. Pat, I'm going to go to you first.
All right, thank you. Yeah. It's good to have a privacy policy. I endorse what was said in relation to the provision. Legally and so forth. And my only comment really is in paragraph four, point two or whatever, we talk about. Council will not collect personal information. council will not collect personal information, any inaccurate. Then the next paragraph is, personal information will be taken to be collected from a person if the person provides that information to the council. So if you have a look above, personal information is just any information that's about a person. And doesn't have to be about the person who's provided the information. I'm not sure that you can actually say we'll not collect in those circumstances, because you actually can't control whether you've collected it or not. And you could say, you know, we'll endeavour not to collect, you could say, you know, or try to ensure the information is accurate or something. But I think you've got two mutually exclusive comments following each other in each paragraph.
Andrea, did you want to comment on that?
Uh, no, thanks for the pickup. I'll uh, I'll have a look at that and make some adjustments.
Thanks, Pat. Keep going.
That was really all. The rest is reasonably standard, I think, and, and quite solid from my perspective. I mean, the issue is always, do we collect more than we need? Um, which is not addressed by this policy per se, although it does say it won't keep things which are out of date or um irrelevant. Um, so there's an attempt to address that, but every organisation in the country or probably the world is or should be looking at the information that they collect, why they collect it. And uh why they retain it and whether they can get rid of it. Because by getting rid of it, they're reducing the impact on the cybersecurity. So that's something that should be part of the activities of the organisation generally. Um, but not necessarily, uh, sorry, not necessarily um um impacted by uh or impacting this policy.
Yeah, I think that's key is that join back to the information management policy that needs to be in place. And that deals with retention, dis- uh destruction and so forth. So thanks for that, Pat. Um, Laurie, I might go to you.
Uh, yep, uh, it's a good, good start to the privacy policy. My, my bit was really trying to understand um the bit of the so what factor. So who does it apply to and how do we enforce it? So for example, it talks about um, you know, employees, elected members, contractors, et cetera. Does that mean that if, if someone chooses not to um, not to sign? Um, they can't do work with council or they can't be involved? What does it mean? Or if someone's been in breach, what are the consequences? Um, how do we, how do we deal with that? So I'm not really sure whether it should sit there or not, but I couldn't understand just really that, what, what it actually means.
Um, Andrea, I'll go back to you or Kathy on that.
Uh, yes, thank you. That, uh, that is a, that is a difficult one. Uh, the policy provides that um if council uses contractors and what have you, then the contractor will be obliged to um operate within the policy. So that needs to be part of any contract with the contractor. Um, the difficulty around enforcement, firstly, it would rely on a complaint. Um, and secondly, um enforcement of privacy issues, because it's not, there's no, um, there's no legal um, uh underpinnings for it, it really is just a policy matter. So it does make it more difficult for councils to fall outside of the state government arrangements. Um, because we are only relying on a policy. And uh the enforcement issues are most impossible to um determine in advance.
There, there, there would be enforcement for your employees though, surely um as part of your uh terms of employment. There would be provo- privacy provisions.
Yeah, so there's enforcement under the policy, that's right. So council members are obliged to follow the council policies, council employees are obliged to follow the council policies. A contractor would be obliged through the contract to um uh abide by the council policy. But the penalty is uh dependent on, so who the person is and um if you're a contractor, I guess the, you know, breach of the contract would be sufficient to um avoid the contract, well, that would probably depend on the seriousness of the matter. So there are some variables in all of that.
So how are we capturing? I suppose Laurie's question is, how are we dealing with that? Is that captured in the contract itself, that if there's a material breach of privacy, we can terminate? Or is that captured within the employee's uh contract? If there's a material breach, it's a, a matter subject to performance management? So I suppose what Laurie's looking for is where's that closing loop of, you mess up, what happens?
Okay, I, I'm not sure that the policy, this policy is really the place for it. I'm certainly happy to take advice um about that. But because of the, each of those people captured by the policy have their own, they'll be their own pathways, how they'll, how they'll be dealt with then with any breach. Uh, it, it, I can certainly, I can certainly put something in that would just bring that together and um make that clear, that depending on who, the, uh, breaches the policy, there will be a pathway to um to a response.
Okay, through the, through the chair, certainly, um, what we'll do is, it's in the implementation of this policy that uh we will ensure that um there are changes in terms of the contract templates. Uh, but then we'll actually point to this um under the council members' behavioral standards. And also the employee behavioral standards, there is a requirement for a, as Andrea said, for compliance with council's policies. And should this not be complied with, then it will be handled through those mechanisms.
Okay, I think we'll take that one as an action. Um, so we'll keep the policy as is, but the action is to look at uh how in practice any breach of this policy is dealt with. Okay, Laurie, anything else from you?
Not for me, I'm good, thank you.
Um, Peter?
No, that's, that's me.
Okay, thank you. The only one for me, uh Andrea and Kathy will be around reporting and escalation for a material breach. So if there is a material breach, I'm sure the uh the chair would want to know, the ma- mayor would want to know, um, as well as the chief executive. And then how we deal with any material breach, because that's um uh dealing with the overall profile of the council. So if I can leave that with you as well as around reporting and escalation for material breaches.
Yes, I can certainly add something in there, thank you.
All right, so um we'll go to the recommendation that the um audit risk committee recommends a privacy policy to council for adoption, subject to inclusion of amendments identified above. Okay, do I have a mover? Thanks, Pat. A seconder, thanks, Peter. All those in favour? Thank you. All right, we will now take a break. Uh, how long, Kathy?
Uh, fifteen minutes.
So we'll come back at one, uh twelve forty five.
Thanks, Brian. Uh, if you could get a mover and a seconder to adjourn the meeting.
Good on the mover. Thanks Laurie, seconder, thanks Pat. All those in favour? Passed, okay.
Yep.
All right, um, okay, I think we need a resolution that the A R C committee meeting reconvenes. So can I have a mover? Thanks, Peter. Seconder, thanks, Pat. All those in favour? Okay, that's passed. All right, we're going to move into item three point one, and I think Irene, who's offline at the moment, is going to run us through this one, or Kathy, are you going to do it?
No, Irene's here.
Okay. Irene, over to you.
Through the chair. Um, this report is designed to give an introduction, an overview to uh our risk um and insurance profile. And so uh what we included in here is an introduction. Um, and um for the benefit of the audit committee, um Pat hearing your comments this morning. Um, this will be nothing new to you. Um, but it is important as a grounding one, because at the July meeting, we'd like to bring back another report. Which is a summary of insurance activity of the city council for the year twenty two, twenty three.
Okay, thanks, um Irene. Um, we'll open it up for discussion. Uh Laurie, I'll go to you first. You're on mute.
Sorry, I'm just on mute. No, I've not really a lot to add to this one. Um, okay with the uh, the report, the content?
Uh, Peter?
Uh, I can proceed, as is.
Pat?
I don't think I would be commenting on this one.
Okay, uh, I know you're not really self ensuring, you're part of a um mutual pool. Is there any uh risk activity that you are self ensuring, where that you have been offered insurance cover for?
No.
Um, and my second question, are employment practices covered as part of the um insurance coverage? So that's inappropriate termination, um, you know, non appointment to roles, your typical uh E R type of activities, where, where would they be covered in your policies at the moment?
Generally speaking, um, I mean, they're not actually covered. The uh mutual liability scheme is for public liability. Um, if there are matters in relation to employment uh and employee. Uh, if it's a workers' compensation matter, for example, there is the workers' compensation scheme that um, uh, that employees are covered under. But employee uh related matters uh to do with employment, um, there is no coverage.
Okay, can, is that something we can have a look at? Because employment practice, particularly given the market nowadays, if you can just take that on board to consider. Um, our, our exposure, given we do have a hundred and seventy staff in the organisation. Uh, typically you would see some type of cover for, uh, for when you've got that number of employees.
Um, we'll certainly have a look at that. The intent of the July uh report coming through to the committee is to uh look at what is our risk profile and the adequacy of our insurances, so we'll include some commentary around that.
Yeah, income protection, um, given everybody has super nowadays and uh protection is normally provided there. Is that an E A requirement around income protection?
Uh, no, it's not, and we don't have income protection insurance at the Wayarau City Council.
Oh, okay, I was just looking at it on page, um, it was part of that booklet, I thought we did have it. Uh, how, how do you determine the, the levels of insurability? So is that part of your next step where you go through and say, well, this is the amount we need for P I and this is based on the review or the recommendations? Because normally you, particularly in corporate, you'd say have a J L T or an I O N would be providing that advice to you. How, how do you get that advice, that the insurability or the insurance levels are appropriate for the council?
The advice comes from um, from the scheme. So um in the current report here, Irene mentioned that Anthony Genovese from the scheme uh did um uh visit Wayarau last week. And that was specifically to discuss the levels of insurance based on our risk profiles. So there is a comprehensive process that is undertaken every year whereby uh detailed surveys are undertaken as to our asset base, as to our risk profile, our scenarios over the past twelve months. And also what is the market and the outlook of the market over the next twelve months, twenty four months. And the J L T who do operate the schemes on behalf of the local government association are very um, uh, very skilled and experienced in the provision of this nature of advice. And so that advice does come from them.
Okay, excellent. All right, um, so we have the uh recommendation there. Can I have a mover? Uh, thanks, Peter. Can I have a seconder? Thanks, Laurie. All those in favour? Okay, that one is passed. So thank you for that, Irene. We look forward to receiving that final document. Uh, Grant, I think you're um going to hit the stage for us now and we've got a few to talk through with you. So we'll go to three point two, the quarterly procurement for January to March.
Uh, thank you, uh, through the chair. So, yeah, so you've said that there's um two of these reports on this agenda. Um, so normally they'll come to the committee on a quarterly basis, but um just because the first one lined up with your first meeting. Um, we just deferred it to now. So um as discussed a little bit earlier, so I guess the key, the two key things that really um these reports sort of show the committee and then council, um, uh, where we've, um, there was a few other key areas involved, but the key things are probably the procurement exemptions, um, and sort of our local purchasing. Um, but also shown in the uh policy is where we've gone out for open tender. Um, and our total spends uh and purchase orders, that sort of thing. So um, yeah, I guess uh the, and it's probably, local spend is probably something that the elected members are more, um, more interested in. And so we've made sure that this report, um, so last year we started actually directly sending this report um to elected members as well, um, rather than just coming via the audit committee. Um, but yeah, so probably the audit committee, the, the policy exemptions that have occurred. Um, and just um make sure they're comfortable with um and ask any questions they have about those.
I think the um, the commentary you provided is very discursive of the reasons why on page one one four. So we'll open up for a general discussion on the first document. Laurie, anything from you?
Uh, mine are more around trying to educate uh me a little bit on, on this. Um, is fifty seven percent a good number or a bad number in terms of the, the local procurement, number one? Number two, is that level of exemptions um abnormally high, average, low? Um, what should we be expecting from that? And then number three is, what sort of level of complaints do you get from people who feel aggrieved that the process wasn't fair or not, not complied with in terms of purchases? So that one, my question.
Thank you, Laurie. Uh, Grant, you've got three questions, eh?
Yep, um, the, the question about local purchase, that's, that's, I mean, it's really one of those really difficult ones to answer. And I guess what we do is, when we look at it, we'll look at what's caused the percentage. I mean, what will tend to happen is we get one very large capital project. And, you know, the very, very large capital projects tend not to be able to deliver by locals because of some expertise or something that's quite, I'll give you like an example was the um, the airport runway project that was um started last year and, and finished in December. Um, you know, it was quite a large project, it was a six point nine million dollar project and it was a very specialised project. And so while we, there was some local suppliers involved as a subcontract level. The, the contractor itself was not local. Um, so I guess we report it and we're happy to answer any questions on it, but it's, I agree, it's one of those things where the percentage can be thrown out by anything, um, by one, one large purchase order. Um, I, I think the, the information about probably the number of procurements happening locally is probably more useful than the dollar value one. Um, because it shows that, you know, we do, especially our lower value stuff, we'll try and purchase everything locally that we can. Um, and a lot of our number of purchase orders are issued locally, it's just that the value is often thrown out by one or two very large procurements. So that's a hard, I, I, that's a very hard one to answer. Um, on number of exemptions, I would say that this is um fairly um, fairly average. So we've, we've had, you know, um, basically four each quarter so far. Um, I, I think that's pretty sort of around the normal sort of level that you would expect um exemptions to be coming through. Um, but obviously there, there will be times when certain circumstances arise and we, and we need to do them um on a more common basis. But I think that's about, about normal, sort of that, sort of fifteen to twenty per year is probably what I would expect to be coming through that process. Um, and then the last question, sorry, I've answered those and I've completed.
They, they agree, they agree, but when somebody doesn't.
Oh, okay, um, um, I've sort of been overseeing um procurement for a couple of years now. I have not been, I've not really seen much come through. When we did, as part of the procurement review, we did um, uh, with the state government were helping us. So they made time to meet with a whole bunch of local, especially local suppliers, um, to just talk to them about the, our procurement processes. And really for them, it was probably about um just streamlining some of the processes for them. So what we've tried to look at and what we're starting to roll out soon is our new templates. And we've really tried to bring our request for quote um paperwork process down. We understand the request for open tender for large projects, you know, that those tend to be, you know, complex um documents with a, with a. documents with a with a bit that needs a bit of involvement, but we've really tried to sort of pare back the the request for quote process. And that's often where a lot of the locals will be involved in the projects in in that sort of value range. So taken that on board, but it was more about that, it was just about the the involvement and what was required to be involved in the tender process. Couple of suppliers that complain about not getting work. Generally, they don't tend to make specific complaints about not getting a project. But once again, I mean, the the prices are not in the ballpark, the the one or two that tend to make those comments. And that there's no way that council can really appoint them, so.
You happy with that, Laurie? Got a nod. Thank you. Anything else, Laurie, from your perspective?
No, that's it. Thanks for those answers.
Okay, Peter?
Yeah, I have a question. I was asked that eight months ago, it's the next, out of three point three, so I'll save it for then.
Okay, Pat?
Oh, yeah, that's, I had the same question about exemptions. I must say, I I agree that generally on page one hundred and fourteen, the reasons for the exemptions are quite clear and the identification of value of money is quite clear. I must say, however, I was less convinced about the first one. There are a number of people who know about local government and would run workshops. And I'm not sure that an hourly rate of four hundred is value for money when you look at three hundred and twenty as the comparative. But that's my only comment in relation to that.
Okay, I think they can take that passing comment on board. Pat, if you're comfortable with that? Okay, I'm comfortable with the report. So the recommendation is, I think we can take out the received bit and we just note the quarterly report. Can I have a mover? Thanks, Pat. Seconda. Thanks, Laurie. All those in favour? That one's passed. Okay, Grant, if we can go to September, December, and if you can provide, I think, a little bit of colour around the large exception being the six hundred and ninety thousand dollar one, I think that's a question everybody was going to ask. What is what is that one about? So over to you, please.
Yes, I'm happy to provide some context on that one. It is a little bit of a weird one and and we we wanted it to be listed here because we want to be very transparent, but it's it's, it was probably the only way we could, of course, we could take without sort of opening council up to some liability. So what happened was we we were moving ahead with a project on the northern coastline. And we'd got to the point of tendering some of that works and moving and signing a contract. And then we became aware that we actually needed an ILUA, so an indigenous land use agreement to proceed with works on that site, some crown land. We'd been in works, conversation with crown land from the beginning of that project, and then and this cropped up quite late. Council are actually working through that process now, but the nature of those are that they are quite, you know, complex and 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 time consuming processes. So and because the project was grant funded, the decision was made that we would withdraw that project from the from the overall northern coastline projects that we were undertaking, so that we could finish and basically basically work to finalise our funding agreement. Now, and and the thinking being that those works will actually happen in a future financial year when we've organised that ILUA and we'll go for different grant funding. The issue for us was managing the contract. And so what we did have, council basically have, it was for installation of toilets and showers and that sort of thing. And the contract and council has some works coming up over a number of years to start renewing a lot of our public toilets within the town, within the city. And that supplier is actually sort of like perfectly positioned to be able to deliver on some of those works. So what we basically worked through with them was a an adjustment to their contract where we will provide them with contract works up to the value of the contract that they were going to undertake for similar works within the city over a number of years, delivering toilet projects. And so that was working through, you know, just the the fact that we did have a contractual arrangement in in place and wanted to to work with that contractor to to arrive at a good outcome. The reason that we've put it through as an exemption is because in theory, we, while we went out for procurement of one thing and signed a contract, we've actually not engaged other contractors for this other work that they're doing for us. And so in theory, it is an exemption to our policy. So I just wanted to document that whole process.
So is that showing a potential gap in current contracts that there should be a walk away clause? If there is some type of external issue that causes the contract to not proceed, particularly around that ILUA? Is that something you guys are going to look at so you're not caught again where you've got a roadblock, but you've got a commitment to a third party from a contract point of view?
Yeah, I think it's, it's definitely a learning, asking, learning item for us. I mean, we've never encountered one of these before, and there's only very specific parts of our council area that are basically the northern coastline and and just south of the city. So anything we do within the city is not impacted by this. So I I think there's definitely a learning there for anything we're doing along the northern coastline in the future.
I'd go broader than that, Grant. I'd go back and talk to your lawyers in relation to we've had this instance, this is course as this, is there some type of clause that gives us protection where we can walk away from a contract if these types of events happen in the future? I'd I'd open that up to other committee members for their view on that. Laurie?
Agree with that.
Pat?
Yeah, that's right. My ILUA is a god beast and they're only really possible where there is a title issues which are wherever there's not, it's not been extinguished, but if a clause can be put in that's simple and straightforward, then it's always safer to put it in or not.
Yeah, it's not a force majeure event, but it's something fairly similar to that. So Peter, are you comfortable to leave that with management to go and look at their contracts as an action in relation to dealing with that risk exposure?
Yes, one hundred percent. I think it's a great observation. This simple question may be, is there not already the out clause? I'm sure there would be or something in that nature. Why couldn't it be? Why are we stuck in this situation in the first place? Like, as in, what is contractually binding us to continue to offer them the toilet upgrade works for the next few years when it couldn't just be, this has come up that we weren't expecting? Is there a side set?
I can make a comment through the chair.
Sure.
Thanks. And they're happy to have a look at our contractual templates to see if there is a a clause that can be worded to go into contracts moving forward. I'll give members of the committee another example of this, of this sort of circumstance. When council was engaging the provider of security screening services, we knew that the funding for security screening services was being provided by the federal government. We also knew that should the funding cease from the federal government, then as has arisen and as the committee is aware, we would need to increase the passenger levy for to pay for those services because council could not do that. We did include in the contract provisions, a provision in the contract for security screening services by the company and out clause basically in the event that we were not able to get the necessary funding to continue that contract through. So it's the same sort of example, and we should look at it on a case by case basis.
Yeah, I'd have that as standard clause in your documentation. Just gives you, you know, that broader force majeure type of clause that if these things happen, you can walk away without the exposure sitting there. So if you can take that as an action. Peter, I don't know if your question was actually answered. Was it, from your perspective?
I don't think so specifically, but what is it the existing, why why can't we get out of this contractual arrangement currently? What is binding us to it if the ILUA, if that is out of the council's control? Why would the contract in any sense be retained?
Grant, did you want to answer that one? Or Justin?
I'm happy to have a go. I mean, I I I agree, I didn't think it, our opinion was that it didn't quite meet the the normal force majeure requirements that we do have in our standard contracts. You know, there's there's some argument that council maybe should have, maybe we should have known earlier about the ILUA. We didn't, but we we potentially, maybe we should have known that we needed to do that. So, you know, it didn't quite meet the requirements, and so we just took it as an opportunity in this case. So I guess because there was the opportunity of these other works that fit this contractor perfectly and they were happy to work with us, I think we took the opportunity to limit any potential liability to council. So if, I guess, they hadn't have been willing to be flexible in their arrangements, we we probably would have, you know, invested, you know, got legal opinions and spent the money on the legal opinion of how we extracted ourselves from this. But I think because of the way they were willing to work, this was something we thought that that worked for both parties and wasn't, you know, was a good outcome. And we've just listed it here in in noting that in theory, we haven't gone out for, you know, for for tender on those individual works that they'll be doing. So, yeah, I think we, there may have been some other options, but we didn't end up going down that path because of the option we chose.
Yeah, Grant, I suppose the direct question is, given the the value, how do you know you've got value for money? And compared to an alternate supplier, I suppose that's that's the question in the end it comes down to. You know, you've given direct work, so you've substituted one for the other. How do you know they were in the market and the right? So if you had to go onto open tender, you still would have selected these guys for the price they charged.
Yeah, and I guess our our thoughts behind that is, we did go to open tender for the work that they were awarded for, and they were definitely the best priced. And we have put a clause into the additional, like, but they signed some additional clauses to the contract by making this change. And part of it was them showing how the unit rates for the work they will undertake compares to the the unit rates that they gave us for this work here. Because they are similar, they won't be exactly the same words, but they're similar types of works.
So there's your probity and due diligence process.
Yep, yep.
Peter, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, to a large degree. And I might not be hearing it properly. So we, we want these works to be done, they're the successful contractor, council commit, yes, we're going to do these works. And then a week later, a month later, something comes up, hang on a minute, I've got to do this ILUA. We can't proceed with these works anymore. And the contractor is, are they like overvalised forces to come and do the works, have they invested money? Are they in like some material disadvantage now? Because and is it the council's responsibility to sort of own that part of it? That's the bit where I'm still not sure, I'm not trying to throw it under the bus or anything, I'm just looking to see what's happened. Where we're going to put in a clause in the future contracts to get out a jail free card in this case, so we don't have this situation again. But what about this specific situation?
Yeah.
They are, why can't we just say, look, we're really sorry, but we can't do this because we've got to address another item? What was something else?
Um, okay, so yeah, I can answer that bit. So sorry, they they had started taking, undertaking some manufacturing works. And basically by negotiating this. They had, they had started manufacturing works. And basically by going down this path, they there was some small costs that we incurred very upfront, very minimal, but they weren't, you know, they weren't looking to fully charge us for for manufacturing undertaken and stuff like that, because it had it had started before we managed to put a pause on on it, when we when we knew that the ILUA. And then there was a period where we were working through how we were going to manage it, and they didn't do any further works. But yeah, they definitely had incurred some costs upfront and they haven't fully charged, on charged them to council.
Okay, thanks for that, Grant. There is probity and there is due diligence going there. Keys always did it past the pub test and you've been through that process as well. So we've got a recommendation there. I need a mover. Thanks, Peter, and a seconda. Thanks, Pat. All those in favour that we accept that report? That one's passed. Thank you. So consultants telling us what time it is. Over to you, Grant. You're on mute, Grant?
Yep, I was on mute.
I don't know if you did that on purpose.
Too fast on the mute button. Yeah, so we thought we would present this report for information at this stage. And just, you know, getting the audit committee ready for for what the process that will be occurring. So obviously, this scheme is part of the the reforms to the to the bill, the to the Local Government Act that occurred over the last few years and are starting to roll out. So the first, so every council in South Australia basically will be reviewed by ASCOZA on a four yearly cycle. At this stage, that's what they've agreed to. They they can, the minimum cycle they're legislatively allowed to do is three years, but they have, there's no maximum, so in theory they could stretch it out, but they've agreed to a four year cycle at the moment in in line with elections. I guess with this, so the thinking, a bit of background to the scheme, it's probably what we got instead of rate capping, where, you know, there was some conversation around going and down a genuine rate capping scheme from the state government that didn't eventuate and there wasn't enough support for that. And then this is almost, I guess, the 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 thing we got, what we got instead. So it's it's an advisory scheme, looking at councils. And and really, it's meant to be looking at your long term financial plan and your asset management plan, making sure you have them, making sure that you that they're consistent and providing advice on on improvements or deficiencies, I guess. So the the first round of the scheme has happened, so we're in round two and will be coming up next year. The the first round of councils have been through the process and had their advice issued in February. And and what we've attached is the advice given to three councils that we thought may be of relevance from that first group. So all councils are put into a grouping by the remuneration tribunal. And we're in group two, and those other councils, Adelaide Hills, Burnside and Murray Bridge are all within group two. So we thought they were probably the relevant ones. So provided them, and and I guess the feedback from the sector so far has been, I don't think the sector necessarily minds the process and what's what's, you know, what they're looking at. But I guess the question is, what is, how much value is there in the in the process? You know, we're paying forty thousand dollars in the cycle for for the advice that we receive for, you know, comparison. We pay sixteen thousand per year for our external auditors and, you know, they're on site for at least sort of six days a year, like fully on site with probably three auditors. They do stuff off site and we get a pretty, you know, comprehensive list of things that we probably need to be improving on. When you look, compare that maybe to the level of advice we're getting from ASCOZA, and if you look through all the reports on their website, there seems to be a lot of consistency in what they're suggesting. Very high level stuff that you probably already know about. And so I guess there's a bit of a question about that value. The, it seems like there's there's some conversation with the minister around the the future of the scheme. It feels like the scheme will probably stay the way it will for the first cycle and every council will get reviewed. And then there may be some looking, some delving into what it might look like for the future and and the value and what it should be doing in the future. And you might see, and it was done in the report, sort of included a bit of a guess at what our advice might look like. That was a sort of a ten to fifteen minute little exercise I decided to do, based on the other advice provided to in the first round. So basically, went went through and a lot of it was fairly similar for different ones and found the ones that would probably apply to us. So, yeah, happy to take any questions or further conversation.
Thanks, Grant. Laurie?
Yeah, Grant, is every council participating in this? And there's no real, like, we're in, we're in, right? So it's not a case of you can opt out. So if that's the case, then to me, this is just an issue around governance and risk management, really, and making sure we're getting value for money. So I'd I'd be saying thanks for noting and use it however you you see fit. That can position council in a good light and help you make the decisions you need to make. But that's about it from my side.
Thanks, Laurie. Pat?
Yeah. Laurie, they can't opt out unfortunately. And the word I have around town is it's actually quite a painful process. And yes, the reports tend to be pretty template. If you have a look, all of the recommendations are quite similar. So the again, the risk in government, governments learnings will be, make sure that we do what we need to do to cover the issues that that they will raise, which in any event is what we should be doing in income. Thank you for the work. Just one of those things that we're stuck with probably for the next four years, like this.
Thanks, Pat. Peter?
Just along some of the lines, yes, it's one of those things that we've got to do.
Yeah, from my, thank you for this update, Grant. My my perspect- Yeah, from my, yeah, thank you for this update, Grant. My, my perspect, I'm with Laurie and Pat and Peter on this. Um, if you have to do it, try and get value out of it. And if you're not going to get value out of it, mitigate how much time and effort you put into it. So that sits with you guys to do that. One outtake I do take from um our perspective. I think we need um deeper insight to the granular assumptions that sit in the long term financial plan. Like, you know, what is the um CPI rate you are using each year? Because we only loo- look at year one. Uh, what are we looking at with um increases in remuneration, you know, the, for staff? And what is the E F T number or F T number of staff each year? So I think we need to go a little bit deeper in those granular assumptions that sit within the budget that we can then challenge back. Saying, why do you think that's appropriate? So that's the key outtake from, from my perspective is our focus around long term financial plan is always tend to be first year. When we need to be looking a lot broader around those granular assumptions that formulate the budget going forward.
Yeah, definitely. And I think we, um, if I could just say, I think that's probably a, a learning for us as well. I think it's probably just even having an extra table that sits at the back of our long term financial plan projections. I think what we're good at is when we adopt our long term financial plan once every four years, do the large review of it. We sort of, it's a larger document and it has a lot, a bit of that information in. I think it just needs a table that sits in the, in the appendices with the actual projections um that shows, you know, like exactly what you said, that the key assumptions over, over the ten years and updated each time we update the plan. So definitely.
Because in the end, in the end, the numbers are the numbers, it's certainly the assumptions you can change. So.
Yeah.
Critical going forward, so.
Yep.
All right, we'll go to the resul- uh, the recommendation. I think the recommendation should be that the Audit Risk Committee notes the Escoza Review Update Report. Notes the Escoza Review Update Report and take get the other report and advice and we're there. Okay, do I have a mover? Thanks, Pat. A seconder, thanks, Peter. All those in favour? Okay, pass. Thanks for that, Grant. Interm uh management report. So I did speak to Kathy. My preference would have been for our external auditor to be here when they present their report. But Kathy's advised me that they're actually on another engagement this morning. So, uh, but I did ask Kathy to follow this through on a specific question, which we'll deal with uh as we go through that report. So over to you in the first instance, Grant, if I can. I'm mute.
I've muted myself again. Um, so yeah, so presenting this report. Um, a, a, as said in the report, I think um the, the report shows there's nothing of great um concern. I'm, I understand there'll be a question probably around the, the one item that's been flagged as, as high risk that we have mentioned we will be taking no action on. Um, and, and, and happy to have that conversation around that one. Um, but yeah, I think it just shows um the items from the previous year that hadn't yet been actioned um we knew about. And were basically listed on our business arising. I think there was one where the auditor asked for a little bit more um process to be undertaken for our grant register, so that one popped back in. Um, and then, yeah, just a small number of items that have been highlighted this year that um are things that we, we doing as part of our processes. I mean, they are good things to note because they're about, um, you know, key things such as our um transport revaluation um uh process. And, and, and updating our asset management plans and that sort of thing. So, um, yeah, I think um myself and um Sandra had a discussion when we received the report and we were talking about the fact that it's, you know, it's, I think it's a great outcome. It shows that, you know, I think most uh processes are working well. Nothing highlighted there that's um of any great concern. Um, and yeah, just, just um general items for um improvement.
I think the word you were searching for was benign, which is always good to get in behind the report. So my question um to Kathy was, have the external auditors agreed with management's uh review and recommendations? And have the, they agreed with the dates that have been set for remediation of the performance improvement? So Kathy, if I can get you to answer that question, if you are able to?
Haven't had the specific conversation today with the external auditors, so we will take that one on notice. However, I will uh hand back to Grant. Um, uh, the external auditors have received our dates and comments and have made no comment back to us in relation to those. So uh we are assuming that, that, that they are okay with it, but we will make that explicit question to them and take that on notice and include the response in the minutes.
Okay, we'll include that as an action and we can just update the action for the next meeting on that. Um, so we'll open up for general discussion. Uh, Peter, anything from you?
Uh, nothing from me.
Pat?
Well, yeah, I'm interested in uh being no action on the high item. Um, I mean, I'm a little bit confused. Do we do both the, sorry, uh, do we receive both a summary passenger data report and a recipient created tax invoice? If we've got a recipient created tax invoice, why are we raising the tax invoice ourselves? But um, I understand that there's a regulated industry and a number of that required by the federal authorities. In a few other organisations where the audit general has raised issues about accepting information from suppliers, by which we then, um, which is then relied on. It is a general requirement or expectation of auditors that there'll be some verification numbers or at least something from the supplier to, that you can rely on that says we confirm that this information is accurate or something like that. So I'm interested in why we're doing nothing at all.
Grant?
Yep, so happy to, um, I mean, I think in this case that the issue is actually lies with REX. So Qantas do actually give us detailed data that's based on a per flight, um, you know, um, uh, info, so it breaks down into spreadsheet. We actually create the, they, they, they started doing that over the last couple of years. They used to just give us the top, the final numbers. They actually got rid of their report, their initial report and they just give you raw data, basically. Um, which is on a flight by flight basis, um, and, and, and it is their reporting process. So I think with that you can, you can, you know, you can take it to be correct. Um, the issue is with REX who will only provide the information at the um, the summary monthly. Um, so all you get is basically passengers arriving, passengers um leaving um the airport a, as a summary number. And we've asked them for um further information on that. What reports can you provide us to verify this? And they basically say they can't. Um, and, and we have followed up with other airports in South Australia and everyone has the same issue. They've asked for this extra information and REX just won't provide it. Um, and I, you know, it's one of those ones of how, what market power do we have to, to force them to do it? What, how much do we have to spend to probably do um verification on this? Um, and so I, I guess the, our position at the moment was this seems to be the normal industry practice. Um, and, and, and there wasn't really a lot of options, um, probably options that wouldn't be cheap um to, to, to get this information any other way. So, look, um, um, we're happy to investigate other things if, if, if it's felt to be necessary. But I guess it was, we took a, um, we looked at it and thought, you know, benefit for us from what we're probably going to have to spend to, to verify the data. Um, this was the best course of action to do, to just go ahead as we are.
I think in that circumstances, I'd be interested to know what the auditors view is in relation to your response. So whether they have come up with anything that is possible because people don't tend to, I mean, it's not saying that your account should be qualified, but um people don't tend to like perceive high risk things which have no action against them. Um, unless an auditor has accepted the four votes that is high risk. It's not necessarily a, a large or large number and um there's, you know, nothing that can be done.
Yeah, yeah.
We've got it as an action. Um, thanks, Pat. Anything else, Pat, from your perspective?
No, that was my name.
Thank you, Laurie.
Uh, yeah, probably just further than what Pat was saying. Um, my take on it is what you've just described, Grant, is a number of controls that you've got in place to mitigate the risk. They've got stuff there where you're getting data from Qantas and you're getting info from REX. So the issue's more around um the, the magnitude of the risk that you're exposed to. And, and I think you, you're potentially reducing it and surprisingly, they say it's a high risk because I would have thought that um high risk would be high materiality as well. And I wouldn't know, I wouldn't assume that would be overly material when we're talking the difference between REX's reconciliation to, to what you've got. So uh to the responses, it would be more around, rather than just writing no action, I'd be talking about the controls we've got in place and saying that, that's um uh in the, in the environment, you know, best management of risk that we've, that we've got are on acceptable uh level. And, and then just commenting on that, having a discussion around that perhaps.
Yeah, with that, Laurie, I think we should also include what if it's a twenty percent plus or minus variation? But what if the numbers are wrong by that? What would it mean? And that gives that materiality piece, it's part of that, his controls and his materiality on that. To go back when we asked that direct question to the auditors, expand on that, our response and the rationale for saying do nothing. Okay, anything else, Laurie, from your perspective? Peter, did I ask you?
I don't know.
You did, and all of it.
Okay, all right. Um, yeah, I'm comfortable subject to those, uh, those activities being undertaken. Um, so I think that the audit, so the resolution here should be that the Audit Risk Committee notes the external auditors, notes the external auditors interim management report. Because we've got the actions above, all right. Can I have a mover? Thanks, Peter. A seconder, thanks, Pat. All those in favour? That one's passed. Okay. Uh, finance policy review, over to you, Grant.
Uh, thank you, me again. Um, so this one I think I'll just um take mainly as read and happy to answer questions. Um, you know, I think it shows that our policies are um up to date. Um, uh, in the, in the whole, um, there were a couple that we only um added in, I think that will add into this list for the future. So when we were doing the review of the overall work plan, there were a couple of policies that weren't, I didn't have sitting in my policy, uh, finance policies list that maybe um didn't sit nicely somewhere else in the organisation. So um in the actual work plan, I think there's one or two extra ones that we'll add to this list um in the future. Um, but yeah, so um, yeah, happy to take any questions.
Yeah, I think you've also asked if committee members have any policies they think they'd expect to see as well. So we, we might do that uh member by member, because I think that's going to be the key part of what's not there. So, um, Pat, I might go to you first?
No, nothing.
Laurie? Peter? I'm, I'll run through a list, um, and I'm not expecting you to answer. It's more to go away and think, does it sit with us as a committee or does it sit somewhere else? So I'd expect us to see a delegations policy and that's linked back to specific policies where appropriate. Uh, external auditor servicing policy, a provision and bad debt write-off policy. And I'll give you some examples of these as well. Fraud management. Council committee members' remuneration expenses and insurance. Council committee members' travel. Power of attorney. Employee remuneration. Redundancy. Interest rate risk, credit risk, capital management. And in the accounting policy, you'd normally have accounting framework. And then with the specific standards, capitalisation of income and expense, depreciation and amortisation, uh, equity investments, onerous contracts, paired intangibles, valuations, we don't do hedging, uh, and financial disclosure. So, um, I'll send through, through email a list of each of those. And I can provide some examples if you think that would be appropriate for council. I don't want to over egg this one because you're not a bank, um, and it's more fit for purpose. So I'm happy to share some information of what you may want to look at there. Okay. So, um, we have a resolution up there that we note the finance review schedule report. Can I have a mover? Thanks, Laurie. A seconder, thanks, Pat. All those in favour? Good. All right, um, transport asset revaluation is there as an update? Did you want to speak to that at all, Grant?
Um, no, I think I'll take that one as read and happy to answer any questions or um we have a discussion on that.
Yeah, I think this one's fairly self-explanatory. Um, Laurie? No, Pat?
Uh, self-explanatory.
Peter? All right, so we'll put the resolution that the Audit and Risk Committee notes the transport asset revaluation report. Can I have a mover? Thanks, Pete. A seconder, thanks, Pat. We all good? All right, um, help me here, Kathy.
And you need a mover and a seconder to go into confidence. Um, once that occurs, uh, the set will shift all of us into a confidential meeting room under the Thames Environment. Um, following which then you can have a discussion on the report itself.
Can I have a mover? Thanks, Laurie. And a seconder, thanks, Peter. All those in favour? Okay. Put us in the cone of silence, please. Um, we have no motions with notice. We have no motions without notice. Uh, next meeting is on the seventeenth of July. Um, and I'll close the meeting at eleven fifty-six.